Welcome to the February 26, 2025 Meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Parna.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Kople.
Present.
Commissioner Gagne.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Commissioner Van Nyman is excused tonight. Thank you for the following staff for being present. Jeff Churchill, Ian Lefcourt, Becky Frye, Kim Dietz, Lauren Alpert, Odrick Cortez, and Chris Wyatt. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's approved. And then I look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 12, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next up is our time for public comment and items from the audience. Ian?
We have one community member who has signed up to speak. That is David M. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please provide your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I wish to speak regarding Agenda Item 5, the Proposed Community Design Standards Update. I like the comprehensive approach to reorganizing the design standards with a focus on equity, inclusion, sustainability, and resiliency. These are values that strengthen Redmond's communities and prepare Redmond for the future. I want to highlight several positive aspects of the proposed standards. First, the context-sensitive design approach in Subchapter 1000 ensures that new development will enhance Redmond's distinct character while allowing for innovation. Requiring projects to incorporate elements from nearby buildings while also providing unique features strikes a thoughtful balance between cohesion and diversity in Redmond's built environment. Second, I commend the standards addressing Redmond's natural features in Section 1210 through 1230. Protecting ridgelines, providing access to shorelines and parks, and ensuring thoughtful connections to the Redmond Central Connector will preserve the character that makes Redmond special. Third, the universal design provisions, though not yet fully developed in this draft, signal an important commitment to accessibility for all residents and visitors. I do have several suggestions as you refine these standards. First, consider strengthening the requirements for sustainability features. As our region faces increasing climate impacts, building standards that reduce energy consumption and carbon emissions become even more critical. Second, ensure the small building alternative option does not unintentionally create loopholes that compromise design quality. Third, expand the privacy standards for residential development to better address higher-density environments, particularly as Redmond grows its urban centers. And fourth, add specific guidance on bird-friendly design to reduce collisions with buildings, similar to standards adopted in other forward-thinking communities. The alternative design compliance process outlined in Section 0300 provides needed flexibility. But I encourage you to establish clear metrics for evaluating when alternatives truly meet or exceed the purpose of the original standards. I like the emphasis on building form typologies that recognize various construction methods like mass timber. These standards will help create developments that respect Redmond's natural environment while fostering a vibrant, inclusive community for generations to come. Thank you for your dedication to thoughtful urban planning and for considering these comments as you move forward with the Community Design Standards Update.
Thank you. All right, next up is our study session on the design standards in Part III of the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050. Bringing up Becky Frye and Kim Dietz, and I'll let you introduce others.
Yeah, thank you. We have a whole team tonight here to talk to you. So this evening, we are kicking off the last major phase of Redmond 2050's deep diving. So it's kind of exciting that we're getting to this section here. It is the design standards package. We have released it in chunks, so you've got a few pieces tonight. You'll get a little bit more, and then a little bit more. Right now, what we are looking at for this evening is the introductory pieces, the context-sensitive design, and the residential standards. And then I will also just walk you through a little bit of the timeline and expect. So again, all of the design-related standards have been moved into Article 3. That includes pieces that were from both Article 1 and Article 2. So there has been some changes in there. And again, a reminder that we're also consolidating various chapters in Article 3 into 2158. The only thing that we are not touching right now is the town center piece because they're right in the middle of project review for something. And so rather than trying to update their design standards while they're in the middle of a project review, those are just going to be left in place. But that means that you don't necessarily have a lot of red lines. There are some red lines in 2158 because the introductory text is in there today. The rest of it is all new. And we encourage you to review it that way because we're consolidating citywide over Lake Downtown Marymore. We're streamlining them. So you're comparing like potentially up to four different standards to just one and a completely new way of organizing things around building typologies. And so the structure is very different as well. So we encourage you to approach your review as if it's just a brand-new section rather than trying to go back and forth. However, we have commented in there saying where the code is coming from. So if you're interested in jumping in and seeing what the current code is, you can see, oh, that was in 2162 dot something, 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 you can go take a look at where it did come from. So just setting that as contextual, it is going to be a completely new set of design standards. But also a reminder that we don't have in the scope, every review of every section, a lot of these things are just getting moved. And so we have made a lot of those notations. We've talked to you about that a couple of times in there, and it is noted where it may be we were just updating the purpose statement or making sure that it meets legislative guidelines on clarity and intent. And so the work will continue. So just as a reminder, just reset, we talked to you and the council about that a little bit earlier, setting up this package versus the next package. But just keep that back in your mind as you start to review all these pieces as well. So what you have in here is the start of what will be the new Chapter 2158, which will be the home of our community design standards. This is a slide you've seen before, just a reminder that we're implementing Redmond 2050, but also new urban building types and just trying to streamline and simplify. Again, it's a theme that you've been working on for the last several years is how can we do this simpler? How can it be clearer and moving it forward? And also just a reminder, the new legislative updates has been a really key part of what we've been working on, especially for the last month or so, is just making sure that it meets all the new requirements on clarity, where it's permissible, and all of those pieces and parts. So you've seen this slide several times, so I won't go too far into that tonight, but just a reminder. So this package does have the introductory text and the context-sensitive design and the residential standards. We are working on finalizing the universal design and all of the other pieces and parts. So you'll see that shortly. I am going to, this is a reminder of, if it's in yellow, it's newer major, and in this white, it's just being moved or minor updates. So there's a mixture here. So just keep that in mind as you start to review it as well. The first part of the code really talks about just the purpose and statements in general, what is the intent of our design standards. It talks about building form and how we're trying to accommodate a lot of different building types and get more variety in our community. We're continuing a lot of the work on getting height variability to, again, try to get some diversity, but also really focusing on our TOD focus areas as well. The alternative design compliance is something that both staff and the community have really asked for clarity on, not just to increase the flexibility, which has been a huge push of a lot of the work, but when alternative compliance is allowed, providing a much more clarity about which we will consider a variability and what we won't, and how we would determine if you can make that change. So we've been making sure that that is provided, some additional clarity on that as well. So a lot of that you'll see there is just outlined in the initial piece. There are some strike-throughs because some of the content that is currently in 2158 really is referenced back to what is process-related, and so it's in another chapter as well. So if it's duplicating process-related information, we just removed it. I'm going to turn it over to Odrick, who's joining us online to go through a couple of slides on building form.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. So the building forms, we have several typologies, and the design standards are going to apply differently according to these typologies. Like the standard is just a building up to 85 feet, and it uses the articulation methods to reduce the sense of mass. So this is basically what we are getting right now. If you look around downtown, we have a bunch of those examples there. Mass timber is where the load-bearing structure is made of either solid or engineered wood. This is something we want to incentivize too because we've heard a lot of the developers that do mass timber are interested in having more flexibility and be able to do these kinds of buildings in the city. Towers are buildings over 85 feet, and they can have a podium or not. So those could include the podium, too. And the small building alternative is something that we've been trying to give an alternative to lower buildings that are going to be very simple boxes, but we are calling also these beautiful boxes. So they don't need to do articulations, but they do have some kind of art or ornamentation to kind of have that alternative to having like those little cutouts in the building. And these are not eligible for any additional height. It's just the base height in the zoning district. Can we go to the next slide, Becky? Oh, yes, these are how they're going to be applied according to the building form. So which of the standards apply according to which of the typologies here? These are some examples of the small building alternative. They have at least 15% of the facade is required to have ornamentation, which can be texture or ceramics or art or vegetation. So there's a bunch of alternatives that we're putting in the code, which would mean like, what is our ornamentation? And they're limited to 45 or 60 feet, depending on the zone. And as I said before, they are not eligible to any additional height or incentivize, any additional height. And can we go to the next slide? Oh, yeah, and this is, I'll hand it over to Kim to continue with the context-sensitive design.
Thank you, Odrick. Through context-sensitive design, the applicant for development must plan and address how their proposal fits certain measures. This includes the individual site, also in comparison to the neighborhood, other development within the neighborhood, or development within the proximity. Through this, a developer will explore their project's relationship to adjacent plazas, trails, parks, the Sumamish River, and/or historic buildings. And this allows, just as an example, a plaza or an open space to be extended from the adjacent development onto the new development, and that larger space would then be shared, providing greater amenity to the community, but it'd be shared through these two developments. And that's just an example of how that adjacent context would work. The next slide, please. All applicants for development, all forums, will address this design aspect specific to the centers. This would not be seen in the outlying areas. It'd be more of a critical area response in the outlying areas. So equally, many of the requirements of context-sensitive design have opportunity for alternative design compliance. This is important because every project, every site, every location, every neighborhood, they're different. And they're unique, so allowing for that uniqueness of the individual development. The alternative design compliance requires that the proposal meet or exceed the purpose for the respective design aspect. So this brings into significance the important, the purpose statements that are the opening portion of each of the design elements. Two, three, sometimes up to five different purpose statements, and those would need to be met or exceeded based on what the applicant is proposing as an alternative. You can see, oh, let's go back. Sorry about that. In this example that is shown here, you can see how the design is providing physical and visual connection for its users to an abutting open space. So this might be something that is flexible location-to-location, or something that an applicant would use alternative design compliance to fulfill. Okay, now the next one. New development is required to blend by mimicking some of the existing design elements, such as, in the example shown here, the color and the rhythm of glazing at the top of the historic building, as well, the historic brick building, as well as the red building on the left side. You have to look carefully, but you can see that rhythm of the clear-story windows is repeated at the top of both the buildings, and the red color of the brick is repeated. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed one point on this one. Go back, please. The new development is also required to be distinctive, and that would be through using different design techniques that are unique to that building, those that are not replicated from adjacent buildings. And in this example, what you can see is the use of metal as an exterior material in comparison to the historic period brick. Okay, now the next one. And then other requirements for context-sensitive design are shown here, and they include avoiding the replication of colors. Now, a certain number of colors could be replicated, but when you replicate too many of them, you start to look the same. So avoiding using too many of the same colors. Avoiding significant features of the designated landmark property if you are developing next to a designated landmark property. And those features are listed on the tax record as well as on file here at the city. And then designs in the old town, the center part of the downtown, should use some design elements that would be similar to historic properties, but they need to do that while also avoiding creating a false sense of history.
So one of the other pieces that we have in our code currently is if you're adjacent to a high-traffic area, a BP MPI zone, we're mitigating noise in some cases, we're mitigating air pollution contacts. So we have a section on just high-traffic areas, and so there's some issues on screening and orientation and circulation. Those have been streamlined a little bit. There's also references to other sections of code that talk about those things, like screening and landscaping and those types of things. So this is a rather short section. And then the residential standards are mostly just moved. So we have bits and pieces that just talk about multifamily buildings and outside of our centers generally. But this section just applies to all multifamily buildings. There's things like courtyard regulations and approaches and pedestrian circulation. So most of that is just really focusing on making sure it complies to the 1293. So for tonight, again, what we're opening up, as we mentioned in our last piece, we'd really love to focus on those bits and pieces that are implementing Redmond 2050. Have we got it in there in the way that you thought it was going to be? Is there still something that is duplicative or missing, is anything feels like it's out of place or unclear? One of the things that we would really appreciate your feedback on, though, because those purpose statements are going to have even more use moving forward, is is it really clear what the outcome we're hoping for is? And making sure that those purpose statements are clear for those alternative design compliance pieces as well. So as we move forward, that is what is going to be super helpful. We also would encourage you to be as detailed as possible, as soon as possible, because what we'd love to do is go through these sections, get all of your comments into the Issues Matrix now, and let's try to resolve them at the next meeting and move on to the next section. Because even though we have several meetings set up on design standards, we'd love to just do chunk, 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 and then be done. So it would be super helpful if, as we bring these sections to you, if you could just give us as many of your questions and comments and feedback as possible, and as detailed as possible in your questions so that we can respond in the Issues Matrix with everything that we need to hopefully resolve it the first time we come back to you. If we're not, we can continue that open, but if we can resolve them and just move to the next section, that would be great. From a timing perspective, again, we're moving towards, hopefully, starting at least the public hearing process on March 26. We do anticipate that that would probably roll over into the next meeting as well. We'll continue study sessions through April. Our goal is, if at all possible, to get it done by the end of April so that we can stay on schedule to get to council review in May and council adoption in June. And again, as a reminder, we're hoping to wrap up all of the packages into one adoption ordinance with the same effective date on everything. So this piece is online on our 2025 Code Updates page. Staff is here tonight to help answer any other questions. And then I have a Issues Matrix framework set up, and we can start filling that in of what information you would like, or if there's any questions that we can just answer off the top.
All right, Commissioners. Does anyone have questions to start the matrix? Commissioner Parna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Becky.
Sorry, just one second. What I'm going to say is, I think we're going to go around, so prioritize your most important questions first. Sorry, I should have given this instruction. Sorry to interrupt. And then as we get to like the more nitty-gritty pieces, if any of those need to be wrapped up in the email at the end, we can do it that way. But that way, the important discussion pieces are with everyone in the group. Okay, now, go ahead. Thank you.
So, thank you, Becky. This is great. I particularly like the idea of a purpose statement because the intent is clear. I have two questions regarding that. Are we borrowing any information from the, because we are doing away with the Design Review Board? From a process standpoint, did they have anything which we are borrowing from to help with the purpose statement? Because the administrators are not necessarily going to be the architects, even though there's a technical review, right? So just wanted to kind of see if anything is spilling over from the old process and into the new one. And the second question is related to very specifically the design context standard. I really like the idea of it, but I want to call out one thing which is bothering me. Resilience is different from ecological, so the material choice that was recommended. So I want to be very clear because this is going to come up in the future as well. I just want to make this point that we either, we can choose a sustainable material, we can choose a resilient material. Now, resilient material can be sustainable in the obvious way that it is going to be durable, but resilience means it is more impervious to maybe higher temperatures or more rain or what have you. So a distinction would be really good because if you build for resilience, it need not be that we are building with the lowest carbon material, just to be clear. So that's one question, isn't, can we differentiate the two in this context standard and moving forward? Thanks, Chair.
Great. Who's next? All right, I'm going to jump in, and then we'll keep going around. So I had a question about the building typologies. I would love for completeness. I know that's not the way it's operating now, but I would love to see a fifth typology for neighborhood residential because then that covers everything in the city. So right now, these are mostly focused on like multifamily and bigger buildings, but if we just added in a fifth typology for the neighborhood residential that has the 30-foot max and say it doesn't apply for height incentives, and it doesn't apply for context-sensitive design, then that just, it's, it provides clarity. And then we can say the rest of this only applies to the things that aren't that. Because I was looking for that, and then I realized, wait a second. I kept thinking I'd found it, and I was like, nope, not here. So it doesn't match the current process, but it would be helpful for the new round of code. Commissioner Kople.
I saw that Section 8 was struck from the Compliance with Design Standards, and I was curious what the thinking was in striking the entire section, if this was due to the elimination of the Design Review Board or some other reason.
Do you have a title for that? Just so we have a reference to look back at.
I think in the document, it would be under Compliance with Design Standards, Number 8. And it describes a situation where a decision-maker concludes the application doesn't comply, and then there's, it looks like, some possibility for the decision-maker to then say that it's out of compliance and doesn't, you know, fit. That entire section was struck, and I'm curious why it was there and why it was taken out.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, I see. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gagne.
I don't know if this is a, I don't think this is an Issues Matrix question, it's more of a help me understand. For the...
Oh, can you speak into your mic?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm trying to go back and use the language that was in the slide. For the small building alternatives, what I'm trying to picture and understand is which developers are going to be interested in building using small building alternatives versus the much larger? And will these small building alternatives be able to provide any of the equity stuff? Because we've had some very robust discussions about making sure that our buildings are equitable, accessible, and especially to make sure that affordability and the accessibility for our mobility impaired. So I have no context to understand which developers, right? Or is there a difference between who wants to build a high-rise, not a tower, and then who's interested in building a small alternative?
Odrick, would you like to take that?
Sure. Well, I guess it depends on their expertise. I mean, not every builder can do a high tower or high-rise. But a lot of these, a small, this is like an alternative, so it's just, it's there if anybody wants to take advantage of it. What is kind of the draw to this is that you don't have to create those kind of corners and cut the whole box, and that makes the building can be cheaper to build maybe, or easier to maintain because you have like, they're a very geometric area. They can also be more resilient because the operational costs are less because you don't have those stuff. So I guess they have to, the developer would have to do an analysis to see if it's something that they want to do specifically. And concerning accessibility and affordability, you could maybe do more complete units, it doesn't really impede having accessibility or affordability, it's just, it's just a box, that's it.
I do think that one of the other places where we might start seeing that option is in a phased development, that they don't necessarily have the full funding to do it all at once, but they want to kick off something. Maybe they'll kick off one building that is the smaller, so it might be a part of a phasing approach, which would help with getting a variety of buildings in there, right, too? Because that one building might be the small, but the next one would be the standard design. That might be another place that we might see that. Also, in some of the smaller lots, especially in downtown, we've got a variety of patchwork sizes. Some of those smaller lots, it would actually benefit them because they wouldn't necessarily have to do a huge project to redevelop the site because they can't assemble a whole bunch of parcels to actually make a big project pencil. So there's a couple of different ways that you might... So there's a couple of different ways that you might start seeing that option pop out.
Do you have any follow-ups, or? Okay. I'll jump in with another one. On the alternative design compliance, I'm just missing context on when that would be used. So everything that was there made sense to me, but I couldn't figure out where, like, why would, why would anyone come to the city with that? Why would the city want to create that option?
Actually, it's, I mean, Kimmy, you can jump in, too, but it's just one way that we can be more flexible, especially as technology evolves. Maybe a new green building technique comes out. It just gives us the ability to be more nimble, and be more responsive to change over time.
It's also something that we've heard from some of our developers over the years, that they feel like they can provide something that is superior to the code. And the code is trying to answer all of the questions that would be asked during, during the process, but, you know, maybe there is a question we didn't think about. You know, we don't know what we don't know, and it gives that opportunity for them to bring something new, or innovative, fresh, or perhaps something that is more reflective of their brand to the table that we haven't yet considered.
That makes so much more sense, because I was just looking at this and being like, why are, this feels like a lot of extra process, possibly, but I couldn't figure out what the advantages would be. But that's helpful. Commissioner Coleman.
I'm trying to think about how to actually ask these questions, I usually do, to try and make it as clear as I can. My thought is a question around a wood for the trees, like seeing the wood for the trees, which is effectively, if we approve a certain change in a certain part of, this is sort of goes to the context, variety, the trade-off, and we approve one thing, and a builder builds it, and somebody else comes in, and then wants to build again somewhere nearby, the context is changed from the original context. So there's rolling context and rolling variety. So ultimately, you could end up with a Frankenstein's monster. I don't really mean it in too much of a negative way, but you, what's the process of taking a step back and saying, in 10 years' time, if we approve this, we're worried that we might see this happen? How do you, how do we get ahead of that versus making individual decisions based on the context?
It's interesting that you bring that up, because that is something that is very common, that the city will approve a certain type of design, and other developers that come after that design is implemented will see that, and, well, that was approved, so then I know that I can do this. Creates an efficiency in their process. But we have built in those elements that do require differentiation. And so we know that, you know, during a certain time, maybe 10, 15, or even 20-year time period, we'll see some things that are similar, and then they'll start to evolve a little bit. So that is, that is just common, the way that urban places do, do develop. Equally, as the comprehensive plan is updated periodically, and then midterm updates, it gives the city an opportunity to ask that very same question. So that would start at the policy level, and, and the neighborhood planning level, and then trickle down into the code and design standards.
We did have a really robust discussion about that, though, because we started to look at, we've heard lots of comments about everything's the same in downtown, right, over the last couple of years. But guess what? Once we switch the design standards and new buildings start to come in, then they won't stand out as much, because then there'll start to be other new things. And so over time, that Frankensteination they mentioned is actually kind of what we're hoping for, because we're trying to hope that we start to get more building differentiation, and that we built a lot of differentiation into this code, because we've had a lot of comments about, don't do the same thing over and over and over again. And so we do hope that a lot of the way that we've worded this language on the context-sensitive design is, yes, reference them, but not too much of them. Then, as new things come in, hey, guess what? You can, the next building can reference maybe a new building, but maybe they won't reference the same thing that they referenced, that, you know, so they referenced the pink, they referenced the blue. You know, so as we start to go in, things will start to blend a little bit better, but still have very different end products. But they'll all be more cohesively working together. Whether that works or not, we'll just have to wait and see, but good thing this code is not a one-and-done. It is something that I will look at periodically. If we're not getting the outcomes that we're hoping to see, we can come back in and say, you know what, maybe we need them to reference, just these pieces are repetitive, and it helps with the pedestrian experience, and, and we're not getting them repeated. So maybe we actually say, repeat two of those pieces, right? And so we can make adjustments over time if the actual outcomes are not approaching what we were hoping to see. But I do think that we've spent a lot of time thinking about what that means, and, and how do we be context-sensitive without being repetitive? And hoping for a diversity of building types, form, height, modulation, and really getting a more, just a variety of things in our community, rather than that same bit and piece over and over again.
It was, sorry, I'll just finish if I can. It was for me, less the similarity, and more the fact that we could get an outcome with a, I'm going to use the word hodgepodge, again, I don't mean it, try and mean negative, but if we don't get ahead of it, we might find we get to a situation where the actual variety has created less beauty in the, in the city, because of the fact we haven't had the same kind of forward-looking and saying, hey, this is actually now going to look, once we've made these changes, and none of these things are similar, but actually altogether, they look kind of odd. That's, and I don't know if that's, any of that's in the code in terms of how to assess that outside of just the individual buildings that are being built, and their applications versus what we think the future would be. That's the thing I'm, I'm kind of a little concerned about, because I really admire the fact, we're thinking of variety, I was asking that question, I think, in the last meeting, but variety can also create problems, and I don't know if that's actually reflected. We're thinking the positivity of variety, but I guess we're not thinking of like, what's the potential negativity if we don't think ahead of that? Does that make sense?
If you, what I would say for this is, I think if you can think of examples, the same way that we're saying you can't copy more than two colors, or you can't, like, there needs to be the repetition of materials, but not like, exact, like, kind of, they need to relate. If you can think of examples where you've seen this build over time, and then it really fails as a group, that would be like, really helpful in clarifying.
There is a, I'm always up for British example. So around St. Paul's Cathedral in the 60s, they knocked down, I've forgotten exactly when they knocked down, they built these really horrible, ugly buildings. And King Charles, as he now is, pressed very hard to change the context there, because what they built didn't fit in. And so, and there's, and London's a medieval city, and so they have all these problems with sightlines, and this building, and the other thing. It's a classic example of how, at the time, it felt like that was the right thing to do, and actually didn't fit in with the, with the more historical buildings there. And now, actually, it's, it's okay, but they changed it in a more positive way. I can't think of another one quite like that, but that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I definitely think that it's something that we can go back and think about. It's a, not something that we have concern about immediately, obviously, because the push that we're seeing in the buildings right now is, we're seeing too much repetition. And even, we've gotten some very specific direction from council, is try to get more variety, be more eclectic, especially in Marymore, they want to see different, 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 not same, same, same. But it is, it's a good point, and let's, we can take it back to our staff and kind of noodle on that a little bit.
Yes, I just wanted to add to that, that King Charles' principles for architecture and the context-sensitive design came from initially his thinking. That was our starting point. So we do have the elements of similarity, the elements of looking to your neighbor, but then also the elements of distinction.
That's really good to hear. Thank you both.
Commissioner Aparna.
I actually had a question, kind of the opposite of what Commissioner Coleman just said, because I was wondering if, let's say Frank Gehry came to the city, given these design standards, said, hey, I'm going to do my thing. Like, let's say he had to build the EMP, the MOPAP, right now, right? It's unique, it does make a sense of place. How would that come up? Because we have all these purposes that he would have to meet, and it wouldn't meet context-sensitive design, but it does make an architectural landmark. And Gehry's buildings, I'm just talking hypothetical here, or a cool house, which is the Seattle Central, I'm not a big fan of the building per se, but you, you get what I'm saying, that, are we, is there any way here that we would want a landmark building in how, which is new, not redmond right now, you know? Is that something that we would want? And if, if somebody wanted it, how would they go about it, given these, this particular method of design standards?
I do think we want it, and that's one of the reasons why we're hoping to be more flexible with the mass timber in particular, because some of those building forms would be very different, potentially. But that, yeah, let's, let's definitely put this on the issues matrix, so we can go back and screen through as a staff to, to make sure that...
I also just want to, Commissioner Aparna can't see, but I kind of think you want to put every commissioner's name next to that, because I was just watching the nodding happening in this room, and I think that they're really, like, it looks like there's a thirst for that sort of option, if available.
Yeah, definitely, the intent is to make it to where that is possible, that we're not over-regulating things such that something that is very unique, and that would become very symbolic of our community moving forward, potentially, we want those to be able to come here and join us, especially as we start to really redevelop our cultural districts in particular. Some of those building forms might look very different from our current building forms. So making sure that they have a place, and they can come and be a part of our community, I think is something that's really important to staff, and so we'll definitely put this on the issues matrix and go back in and make sure that we've screened for that specifically.
In other words, it might be something iconic, or something experimental, or influential, something where we're saying, like, we recognize that there's one way of building buildings, but then there's a different mindset that's just pretty far out there, and like, that would be wonderful to have an option for that in the code. Commissioner Coleman.
Interesting, so like the Guggenheim's that, right? Because there's lots of discussion and arguments about it before it got built in New York, I think, if I understand that right, and it's now an iconic building, I think, I'd suggest it is, maybe.
Chair, I had a follow-up on that, just, just for one minute, if it's okay?
Please.
So I also wanted to say that when we have the iconic building, when an iconic building is proposed, it truly should be iconic. So it's like this, when I went to architecture school, it, we had one kind of rule which came out, which was, like, you can make, if you deviate from the regular stuff, it has to be a significant deviation that it looks, or is perceived as completely different. A minor deviation, or even a moderate deviation, will be seen as just that, a deviation, it doesn't look like a, an entire design. So the iconic piece has to be truly that for it to get built. Otherwise, you're going to get what Commissioner Coleman was talking about, which is a more hodgepodge thing, which is variations of the same theme, but not very cohesive. Does that make sense?
Yep, that's a great clarification. And I'm, again, seeing all the nodding in the room, so thank you. I'm going to take it to something much more mundane with terminology. In the process section, so this is 21580020B5, we're talking about the process of basically demonstrating changes, and it said, unless the applicant demonstrates that, et cetera, I'd like to add to the review authority in that sentence, so it's super clear that it's not even that they have to demonstrate, but there has to be sign-off. I just felt like that was missing. But then also stepping back in that area, and also in 2176020E, which is linked from it about the process, we're using different terminology for who's signing off. So I saw authority, review authority, and decision-maker. And just being super clear that we're using the same term every time, and I liked review authority, because it sounds so official, but decision-maker also works for me. Just so that there's no confusion about what we're talking about, and caps are great there, even though they're not usually used. Great catch, thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Kopley.
In 21586200.B4, there's an image, and it looks as though we struck the below-grade parking from the image. I'm curious, was that done as an encouragement to developers not to build that, or as a nod to the fact that now parking is not required in some of these areas? And just personally, I think that's fantastic, to not have the parking requirements, but I'm just curious what the thinking was.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah, it's just to make it more universally applicable, because in some of the areas of our city, we're not going to be doing a lot of underground parking, so it's just trying to get the illustration to be more universally applicable. Obviously, in some places, it can still allow that. We're trying not to have illustrations that show things that might not be allowed, or typically wouldn't be allowed, or frequently wouldn't be allowed, so...
Oops, here now, mic.
And may no longer be required, right? As far as the parking.
Yeah, if, if it's, it's definitely, if it's not a requirement anymore, but it's in an old image that was about requirements, we would definitely remove those as possible as well. So just to let you know that we, we understand that there are a significant number of illustrations that are old, that will not be updated with this round, and in the next round, we're going to try to do more of that, and we probably won't, still won't even get to all of them. But we're trying to strategically mark through the things right now that are problematic to keep in the illustrations, and so that would be why we would specifically call out an illustrative change right now.
I'm going to go, and then I'll bounce it back, unless it was on the same. Okay, another one that I had, 21581230B1, so this is the section that's talking about park and shoreline, and San Amos River access, and there's an A, B, C, D, E set of different rules about that, about where it's required to have pass-throughs of the property. And reading through, they almost all sounded identical to me, like, I think they're all saying the same thing, and I was wondering if that could be condensed into a single sentence that just says where you need pass-throughs to parks and shoreline, and amenities, or features, or however we want to call those out.
Great, thanks for that comment. We definitely love streamlining around here, so...
Commissioner Kopley.
Back to the comment that Adam made, and Aparna also commented on this, on the design. On the iconic and landmark designs, will those be reviewed by the Landmark Commission that we discussed last year? And a second part of that, have we gone through the process to select those commissioners?
I do have an update on the Landmark Commission. So the Landmark Commission that we did have was, it was comprised of the Design Review Board plus the landmark, two landmark commissioners. What the code now says is that there is one landmark commissioner, and that landmark commissioner works with the King County Historic Preservation Commission, their landmark commission, in order to process anything that is redmond-based business for changes to landmarks. Now, that said, the iconic or landmark, as Commissioner Aparna described it, that would not go through the Landmark Commission review. That would be modern development, representing iconic architecture, and it would undergo staff review. If staff, depending on the nature of it, if staff did need assistance, there is a provision written into the code that, in, with the absence of the DRB, that they would have access to a design professional to assist with something that perhaps they did not have expertise in, or if they needed additional staff capacity.
I would anticipate if something's coming in with a very unique design, something truly iconic, we would probably need to execute that option. Staff just, just doesn't have the capacity and training for that.
Commissioner Aparna.
I had a point about 21581600, high- I had a point about 2158 1600, high traffic corridors. I was just curious if there was, is it a deliberate decision whether to not have things like, some specifications attached like triple glazing or extra insulation for like noise? Because a purpose talks about noise and air pollution and all of that. So I'm just wondering if part of the design, do we consider specs as part of this? Or is it only gonna be design standards minus specs?
I will have to say that this is one that will, it's being mostly moved in this round. So it will probably go into the next round to actually review to see if there's anything more that we can do. Uh, it, there's a lot that came up through the SEEPER process. It's just recommendations we're looking at, um, noise and all of those things for those high traffic corridors. But we just didn't have the scope to go through, really look at that in depth right now. So just anticipate that this section is mostly just a move for right now.
Got it. Yeah, could you please put this in the issue matrix so it's there for like future?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got it down.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Um, I'm just looking at some of the descriptions on, I think it's 58 1300, the relationship to adjacent properties. There's sort of, well, actually the numbers I thought were four and there's one, two, two and three, actually. So there's a numbers, numbers question. My point is more about, I was trying to read through them and try and understand the differences between them. I kinda see the difference between number one and two and three. And two and three seem like the same. I'm just wondering if there's some way of tidying that up a little bit? Cause it doesn't feel like they're mutually exclusive in some of these or as clear as they might be as to what the point is that's different as well. So we could look at that.
Great. Um, I have a little bit of, um, a knit, but it also builds on top of Commissioner Gagne's comment from before. Um, I ran into confusion when I was going through the small building alternative. And actually her question really pointed to it, but I think there are two things happening. The first is I'd love to see a purpose statement added or updated that actually says like, examples of when this would be used are. Because it sounds like there are very clear places where this is useful. So just calling that out so people can be like, does this even apply to me? Just makes the code easier to understand. But then the second piece is this is one of the only places in the code where I found noun strings. And I found them very confusing. So alternative design standards for small buildings might be easier than small building alternative design standards option, because that is like a lot of nouns in a row. Um, and in general, I'm just, I was so impressed reading through the code because I would expect to see a lot more, um, and I wasn't. So the clarity is really good, but that was one where I was still just, it lost me.
I will go back and take a look at that, thank you.
Oh, noun string?
Noun string, okay.
Yeah, it's.
Heard that before.
It sounds like it was written by a government office in the 50s. It just like they keep stringing on more nouns. And it's, it's like the opposite of clarity in technical documentation, so.
Yeah, no, that, that's actually the type of comment that's super helpful for us too, because we've, we've been through this 30 million times and some of those we just glaze over at this point. Um, so if you are pointing out things that, okay, that sentence just doesn't make any sense, that's super helpful to us, because in our brain, we've seen it so many times that.
That noun strings get weird, because it's like, your brain tries to chunk it into groups, but it can get it wrong, um, like which words in that phrase go together and then the meaning changes. So it's just.
Yeah.
And for the most part, I wasn't finding any, which is awesome.
Thank you for that, I've got that down.
Others. Commissioner Aparna, anything? Nope, Commissioner Coleman.
Um, I just wanna ask, it's a general question, which sort of goes back to the variety. You've got, is it four different types of buildings? Um, are there any caps on how many of each we should, we're allowed to have? Or we should expect to have or, or not? Is there, is there an expectation, like everybody came in and said, hey, I want to use option number one all the time? How do we stop someone doing that if we don't, if we think there's too many?
I think, um, it's something to be think about differently than that. We're not taking, hey, we have this many buildings, that many buildings, this many buildings. What we're trying to do is say that if you have, these are standard design requirements. Everybody has to apply. But if you have something unique or different or taller, or you have a mass timber building, we know that those standards for those types of buildings, we wanna do something a little bit different. And so those are just different pathways for different types of construction. Um, but our standards are our standards are our standards. So think of that as, that column as just everybody applies as a typical. Um, but the actual building forms will be all over the place and they'll just, it really doesn't matter. It's just that, like, for instance, those mass timber buildings, again, we've, we've heard over and over again that they have different forms. They have different span widths and, you know, there's different things that they can do. And so in order to make sure that we're not requiring certain modulations that would then make it impractical to do a mass timber building, right? So, cause why would you force a break in there when you have this huge long span? It would be beautifully done, right? Um, and so that's what we're trying to do is we're just trying to accommodate the different ways of approaching different needs for different building types. Not necessarily trying to say, hey, we need X number of these and X number of those.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coopley.
In 2158 0100, um, section C to B. So this is facade. Um, we struck the, and I think I understand the reason why. You must use quality durable resilient materials that are historically used. I think we did that for mass timber is my guess. However, um, is there a possibility we could recycle some of that language? Because I do like some of it, to say that we must use quality durable resilient materials that are contextually appropriate to the Puget Sound as opposed to historically used? So we're not limiting mass timber or something else. Cause I think there is a place for a description of the materials that are appropriate for a facade.
Okay, I see the section that you've, okay, very great. I'll add that, yes, something that we can look.
That one, um, I like the, I think what you're getting at. I would just wanna make sure that it's very measurable so people know if they're on the right side or not. We, like the, uh, maybe a year and a half ago, we got into a whole conversation about what Pacific Northwest architecture looks like. And you could kind of tell when the commissioner, each commissioner had moved to Redmond based on what style they thought represented that. So being like very specific, if we're going that direction, I think makes sense rather than saying something like contextually appropriate to, which could seem either like gatekeeping, like we only want what's already built or could be vague. But I agree, I like most of the wording. I have one, this is an incredibly tiny knit and it might actually be out of scope because it's about art. But in 2158 6030B, so this was talking about like the courtyards. Um, there was art where we went like bird's eye, bird's eye, bird's eye. And then there was an elevation, but I was still in bird's eye mode. And usually when there's an elevation, there's like a person in a tree or something to show you that you're looking straight at it. And this one didn't include it. So I was trying to, I was thinking it was like the width of the courtyard and it said, or I was confusing width and height. I wasn't working in three dimensions anymore. Um, so just a little cue for new art when it's an elevation that like, we're looking straight at it instead of down on it would be awesome.
Yep, I can see what you're talking about, looking through them. The transition to the, um, it isn't clear immediately.
But you can work through it and get there, but it just, it, it took me a minute to figure out, why is this usually so obvious? And I was like, usually there's a person in a tree in a car and then we know we're looking at it. And we can get rid of the car, I'm fine with that, but. Um, anything else? Okay, thanks to everyone for all of this. And if you think of additional things or of smaller knits that don't seem meeting level, feel free to send them by email and otherwise we'll wait for the next package to come back. All right. So then with that, we are going to take a quick break. So we'll get back at 8:10, um, in time for our training. So we'll get back at 8:10 in time for our training. We have a briefing on training for the annual code cleanup process. Bringing up Jeff Churchill.
All right, good evening, planning commissioners. We have had a couple of trainings on various kind of work items that run across the planning commission's desk over the course of your meetings. And we've had functional plans, we've had the docket. So tonight is arguably the simplest of them, which is the annual code cleanup. It says 2025, but really this could be any year. It doesn't matter. This is January because this was on your agenda on January 22nd. But remember, we deferred it to tonight so that we could finish other topics at that time. So I'm going to introduce the annual code cleanup program and review some examples and take any questions that commissioners have about that. So why do we have an annual code cleanup? Well, because we, staff find, customers find, community members find mistakes or things that aren't clear. They might find a noun string, for example. And so it's really to maintain accuracy, clarity, and consistency in the code. We correct errors, we address discrepancies. Sometimes the law changes and we have to change, too. And so sometimes the code cleanup is making sure that the zoning code is aligned with state and federal law. Or sometimes there are other just minor improvements for accuracy, clarity, or consistency. I think what it is not is anything that changes policy. It is not anything that also requires a comprehensive plan amendment. It's also not something big or substantive. And I know those aren't entirely measurable, but just kind of quantifying, or not quantify, I'm just kind of getting those things in buckets. I guess there's, there's big and it's not that. All zoning code amendments need to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. The decision criteria for code amendments is that. It is consistency with the comprehensive plan, that's the only decision criteria. Comprehensive plan does have policies about development regulations, and those are pertinent to this conversation. The key policy is this one from the participation element, it's PI 17. And it talks about how Redmond's development regulations should be written. It says that they need to implement the comprehensive plan, and they need to be comprehensive, they need to have all significant development requirements. And for the, this is where kind of the code cleanup effort comes in. They need to be clearly written, and they need to avoid duplicative or inconsistent requirements. So our, our comprehensive plan says, this is how our development regulations should be. When we find things that are duplicative or inconsistent or an error, we need to fix them because the plan says that we should. Okay, so I'm going to run through a few examples. These are all real examples, these have happened in the past. There was a code cleanup to amend an allowed use table to better reflect the intent of the city council in adopting zoning regulations. So a use was inadvertently made prohibited. It was not the intent of the city council in adopting that ordinance. And so there was a cleanup to fix that. And that's fixing the discrepancy between intent and the actual impact of the use table. There was another example recently where the state updated legal requirements around daycares. And so the city needed to update the zoning code for those. Earlier this evening, we were talking about design standards. This is not part of the annual code cleanup because there's a lot happening there. But one of the things that's happening is updating the design standards to meet current state law. So that happens, we have a whole chapter around cannabis-related uses. And that's because of old, it's not new state law anymore, but it was new at the time. Let's see, clarifying applicability of regulations, that's another example. So this was actually in Redmond 20, no, this was just prior to Redmond 2050. There was language added in zone tables to refer people to the critical offer recharge area, section of the critical areas ordinance, so that it would be clear to people reading the code, applicants and staff and others, that there are important requirements in that chapter that anybody must comply with, and, you know, please go read them. So it's just a wayfinding element to help the code be more clear for people. But it didn't change the meaning of, of anything. I believe that's the last example. So as I said, this was going to be the simplest and shortest of the trainings. We are developing the annual code cleanup package now. We expect that will come to the planning commission in the third quarter. So it'll be in the summertime for your review. It's likely going to be a handful, some, some number, maybe a dozen or so, minor amendments that come to you as a single package. Because any one of them is, is not going to be worth your consideration individually, but as a package, they are worth your consideration as cleanups. So that's what you expect. This slide is now out of date. But I do want to point out, there's one more briefing coming up, which is on March 26th concerning the budget, city budget. So we're going to be joined by someone from the finance staff. So that will be in a month. And I am happy to answer any questions you have about code cleanups.
All right, I'll jump in. So for this, I love knowing where the planning commission responsibility is. So if planning commissioners spied something in the code where they think it needs to be addressed, what's, what's appropriate for them to bring up? How do they bring it up? When did they bring it up?
Sure. If, if at any time that you're reading the code and you see something that's like, this needs to be cleaned up, please send us an email. And then we can, we can get it into the work program. It'd be appropriate any time of year.
And then if someone from the community has a similar issue, encourage them to also.
They can also send staff an email.
Great. Other questions? I think that was very straightforward. I think we're good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, and staff and commissioner updates?
The main staff update is a reminder that we have our workshop tentatively scheduled for April 30th. That date is getting closer all the time. Please respond to the email I sent to your planning commission email address confirming that that date works for availability. And two, any additional topics you think might be worth discussing at that workshop. Should already be in your inbox. The closing is the end of this Friday. Once we have that, we'll formalize the schedule and move forward.
And if I can just piggyback on that, I've heard from a couple of commissioners, ideas throughout the year, actually, about norms or ways that we work together that people would like to discuss. This is our time to do it. So if anyone has either questions that have come up, or like nitpicks or things that we just want to discuss as a group, this is our time to do it. So if you can include those in the email also, that would be wonderful. And then we can just filter through and figure out what to actually cover when we're all together. All right, any other commissioner updates? No, okay, in that case, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then we're adjourned.